All right, we're a couple minutes late. I promise you we'll get on time. We're still new. So I'd like to call to order the January 25th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And I'd like our District Attorney, Kevin Steele, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Not to put you on the spot.
(inaudible)
All right. So how's everyone doing this morning? You can do better than that. All right, so I have to say, last week, we had a number of weather events. And it's been three weeks since we were sworn in on the Board of Commissioners. Three weeks as me being Chair. And I already got to close the county at least two times. So, in all seriousness, I want to give a shout out to our teams and public safety that helped make sure that we kept our roads and sidewalks safe during the weather events last week. So first, I want to start by acknowledging Judge Nicole Tate Phillips, who is here today, if she wouldn't mind just standing so we can acknowledge her. So last week, I had the pleasure of seeing Judge Tate Phillips receive the Justice Juanita Kidd Stout Woman of Distinction Award from the Baristers Association. This award is presented to an outstanding woman attorney of color who has helped advance the education and careers of other women of color within the legal profession and beyond. Throughout her career, Judge Tate Phillips has truly created countless opportunities for women of color, all while maintaining her character, poise, and professionalism. I'm proud that she's Montgomery County's own. I'm grateful that you swore me in on January 2nd. And thank you for leading the way to ensure that women, girls of color, can see themselves in you. So congratulations on that award, and thank you for being here. Next, I want to honor that January is also School Board Appreciation Month. I started my political career as a member of Norristown Area School Board. I know Tom also was a School Board member. And I just want to take a moment to thank and honor the hard-working members of school boards across Montgomery County. These school boards work tirelessly to support our kids and teachers. They're making very difficult budget decisions. They're tackling tough questions. And most importantly, they're working for the betterment of our children. I asked some of my former colleagues from Norristown Area School Board to be here so that we could acknowledge at least the work they are doing in the Norristown area. And I'm grateful to, is Cynthia Worth here too? It's just that, okay. I'm grateful for the two of you to be here. So if you could stand up and just introduce yourself.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chris Aramio. I am the School Board President of Norristown Area School District. And to my right, we have...
I'm Sharon. I serve on the School Board. I just was re-elected to my second term. I also serve on the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors.
Great. So let's give them and all school board members a round of applause. And a little note, Chris, you took my spot on the School Board, right?
Yes.
You did. You were appointed. You were appointed. So you all worked so hard, you know, over the years. I remember the challenges that I faced as a School Board member. Long nights, hard decisions, constant, you know, criticism. So thank you for staying the course and keeping our kids, our administrators, and our teachers first. So kudos to you and all School Board members across Montgomery County. Thank you for being here. Next, I'd like to announce this month's Way to Go winners. So Tom Benner, Thomas Benner, are you here?
Yes.
Hi there. Okay. So Tom is a Senior General Accounting Manager in the Controller's Office. He is the person county employees call when they need help with understanding what's going on with their general ledger. Very important work. If someone wants to learn how to view their spending, funding entries, or getting things properly accounted for, they know they can call on you, Tom. He is always patient and helpful and makes himself available. So congratulations to you as a Way to Go winner. Next up is Mafalda Carrado Hassan. Is he here today? No. Okay. But he's been here with the county for many years. Oh, according to her work, I apologize. Her nominator said that she has mastered the ability to both work hard and work kindly, which is a nice combination. Her performance is top-notch. So congratulations to her. Ray Hight, are you here? All right, thank you for being here, Ray. Is also a Contract Manager in the Procurement Office. Ray is always accessible and willing to give of his time and expertise. He has a wealth of knowledge that he is always willing to share and has been incredibly patient during the transition to electronic contracting. Congratulations to you, and thank you for being here. And then we have a few more. Megan Morrison is the Deputy Chief of Treatment Courts. Last month, when arriving at work, Megan noticed that a roof hatch at 408 Cherry Street had been left open all weekend, resulting in significant flooding. Megan wasted no time contacting her supervisor and the building's landlord about the issue. She also took the initiative to climb up the ladder and close the hatch to prevent further damage. Thank you, Megan, and congratulations. Daniel Pickle is a Correctional Officer. Daniel has become a staple of the Admissions Discharge Department because of his knowledge, experience, willingness to help others, and positivity, which he often spreads to those around him. Congratulations to Daniel. And lastly, Camille Stevenson is Leave Administrator in our HR Department. Camille works with employees during some of the most exciting times in their lives, such as childbirth and adoption, and sometimes the most difficult moments. The compassion she shows while supporting our employees is unmatched. We are so lucky to have Camille in our HR Department. Congratulations, Camille. So well done to all of this month's winners. And I'd like to invite, well, those present, right? So we have two present, to take a picture at the end of the meeting with our fellow commissioners. And since employee recognition is something that is so important to all three of us, I'll be sure that we're going to rotate who gets to announce these exciting winners going forward. And then the last thing that I have is, I can't believe February is next week. And Montgomery County's Black History Month Committee is hosting its annual Black History Program. This year's theme is a celebration of African-Americans and the arts. Each Wednesday in February, there will be an event focusing on different topics, including movies, music, hair, art, and fashion. And I'll have to tell you that I studied documentary film at Penn State, but I will not be featured because that dream was quite deferred post-college. But there will be three events that will be virtual, and the fourth and final event will be February 28th in-person with live performances and lunch. All Montgomery County residents are invited to participate, and details can be found at And now, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Makiza for comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for joining us and for being here today. We have a number of exciting things happening in this meeting. I also want to just start by noting that we had our Board of Elections meeting on Tuesday, and we had a special election, as some of you know, in North Penn Township in January. And in that election, one of the issues that was raised to us was the issue of ballots that had the wrong year. And you all know what it's like. I'm still signing checks 2022 for some reason. But when voters signed their mail-in ballots, they put the incorrect year. We decided, in the absence of a clear directive from the courts, that we would, in fact, count those ballots. And I think we believe that, as office holders who took an oath to protect and uphold the Pennsylvania Constitution, which guarantees a right to free and equal elections, that in the case of any such ambiguities, we have to err on the side of protecting voting rights. So that was a policy that we passed on Tuesday to count those ballots, and I think is an important message to the voters in Montgomery County, that we will make sure that if you're eligible, if you're registered, and you are a lawful voter, that your vote will be counted. The second thing that I wanted to mention, I'm very much looking forward today to hearing from our District Attorney. We're going to be reviewing and approving, I imagine and hope, a contract that will help deliver on our commitment to modernizing county government, and, in fact, further in terms of municipal government through law enforcement. So the District Attorney's going to tell us about the records management system, which was really built in the 80s, and we're bringing it up to speed. They already had at least 30 municipal police departments sign onto that, the countywide record management system, in the past. But we're bringing on 17 more and investing almost $2 million in that project, which is going to help our community stay safer. It's going to help law enforcement safety as well, and it's going to help them make smarter decisions. So we look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything?
Do I have time?
I shortened mine this week.
First off, I want to welcome everyone also that's here this morning. It's great to see so many faces, especially smiling at us. That's always a good thing. You know, the men of you guys who've been on the School Board, I spent 12 years on the Springfield School Board, and I was on 12 years on Montgomery County IU. So for those that really never experienced being on the School Board, let me tell you, it's a lot of fun, up to the point you get sworn in, and then it's just a thankless job. But it is rewarding as well, because you're working extremely hard for, not only for your community, but for the young, you know, the kids throughout the community. So we're all driven to provide the best education possible, and that's the common among School Board members, is that everybody, you know, once they settle in, they're just, they're trying to do the best they can to provide an amazing education. And Montgomery County, we have some of the top school districts throughout the state, so that's something to be extremely proud about. And that means we have great, great professionals, but we also have great, awesome School Board members. And I also, you know, wanted to say, I'm looking forward to the record management system as this continues to evolve. I think it's going to be an amazing thing for the county and all the police departments within Montgomery County. So I'm really excited to have, supporting that, but also excited to get updates and see how this thing is continuing to evolve over time. This week, as Jemil said, that, I mean, we're three weeks, but it doesn't feel like that. It feels like we've all jumped in. And me personally, I've been, you know, I have key areas that I want to be focused on throughout my tenure here. And, you know, one of them, well, two of them, was homelessness, and also, I'm a big advocate for public safety. And I've been taking a lot of time meeting with department heads and really trying to get an understanding of all the different workings of the county. But this past week, I was able to spend some time with an amazing woman up in Pottstown, Joanne Washington. She's working extremely hard for the homelessness, and her goal is to not only provide an environment and work with homeless, but also she's, her goal ultimately is to have a mechanism in place for her to be able to have people that are in this situation and help them evolve and train, retrain, whatever it may be, and help them move along so that they become, you know, really successful citizens of the county. So she's just really working hard. So I was just amazed when I was talking with her, and her story alone was just, she starts, it happened, she was homeless like seven, 2000, I forget what year it was, 17 or something like that. And she's been on this mission and driven, and she's turned her life around. She's just an amazing, amazing person. I also, we had, there was an EMS meeting over in Skippack Township earlier this week. And for those that may or may not know, I mean, within Montgomery County, but other areas as well, I mean, we're starting to see, you know, EMS issues with short, not having enough resources, funding is always getting tougher. So it was actually a good meeting to get a kind of a scrape over as far as what problems that these local communities are facing when it comes to EMS and firefighters. I do know that we had staff there that also talked about the county's already doing and moving forward with doing a complete EMS study with the goal of, and they're doing a lot of interviews and research and all that, with the goal of actually being a part of the solution and helping guide these municipalities in whatever way we can to alleviate that issue. So it's a good thing that's going on. There's representatives from the county to state, a lot of local representatives. So it was an awesome meeting. I also had the opportunity, oh, the three of us had the opportunity to meet with the Police Chief Association leadership team this week and kind of got an overview of what's going on there, and how cohesive all of our police departments are through this Police Chief Association is, and how well they work with each other. And also, we have, you know, Attorney Kevin Steele, right? How well they work there with the DA's department. So that's awesome. So we got a great overview. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to spend some time with Sheriff Calcany and his group. What an amazing team that he has over there. I got a complete overview. I got to meet several of his top staff, his leadership. And I also got an opportunity to interact with the Bomb Squad. And I learned a lot of things, and just to see the operation that they have in place is just amazing. We had to spend some time with the K-9 unit. So, I mean, it's something that we should, all residents of Montgomery County should be extremely proud of, of what we have here. Because I mentioned this before, and we have a top-notch Sheriff's Department, as well as we have one of the best DA departments in, probably in the country, I would say. Maybe I'm a little biased, but we do have an awesome department. And finally, well, I'm not going to go over there, never mind. But again, thank you.
If I'm timing it...
Well, I went fast.
I think yours is longer than mine. No. In all seriousness. Okay, great. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. All right, so we're going to have a presentation about Heart Health Month from David. Is David here? Hey?
Hi.
Thank you for being here. Good morning.
Thanks for having me. My name is David Chino. I am the Division Director of Health Promotion with Montgomery County Hospital of Health. Every year, heart health falls in the month of February, and the purpose of that is to raise awareness for heart disease. So what do you think of when you think of heart health? Make you think of exercising? Or make you think of getting your blood pressure down? Make you think of a certain way of eating? Make your mind go towards somebody you need or you know as with heart disease? Heart disease was responsible for almost 700 deaths in 2021. That's grossly accurate, yes, here, Montgomery County. That's one in every five deaths, one in every five deaths. Every year, it kills more people than all forms of cancer combined. However, in many ways, heart disease is very preventable through living a healthy lifestyle in life, managing a healthy weight, engaging in daily physical activity, eating a heart healthy diet, and not smoking. Small differences make a big difference. Live awareness is essential. It's really vital. Over the next slide, I'm going to share with you an important way to help improve your heart health in February and all year long. National Awareness Day is February 2nd. It's one of the easiest ways to raise awareness to heart disease and heart and cardiovascular health. All you have to do is submit a request. This is the day that's being better recognized. So on Friday, February 2nd, one of the things that you can do is create awareness to heart health is to submit a request. Risk factors for getting heart disease are more common in your population than everyday life than a lot of people realize. Getting screened for those risk factors, especially the silent ones, like high blood pressure and high cholesterol, is a great opportunity to check in on your health. The county, actually, the Office of Public Health, just submitted a grant to the Pennsylvania State Department of Health for a blood pressure self-monitoring grant that's going to be focused here in Norristown. So cross your fingers that we get that. We should hear back in about eight weeks. You can progress the slide, please. According to the American Heart Association, there are more than 350,000 cardiac arrests that happen outside the hospital every single year. Learning CPR can double or even triple somebody's chances of survival. This is also something else that the county has to offer. So if anybody's interested in learning CPR and AED, please reach out to me, and I'd be happy to connect you with the right people. You can progress the slide, please. Life is busy. I do understand that. But your heart is important, and all it takes is 10 minutes of physical activity every single day for your heart to really start to feel the benefits of being active. All you have to do is walk five minutes, you know, in one direction, walk five minutes back, and your heart's going to thank you for that. If you're feeling a little bit more ambitious, the Montgomery County also offers the Montgomery County Trail Challenge, which is entering its ninth year. That begins the end of April and runs through the beginning of December. And it's a really, really great opportunity to get out there and visit all the wonderful and beautiful parks and trails that Montgomery County has to offer. You can progress the slide, please. Set a family goal to seek out especially heart-healthy meals during the month of February and, you know, all year long. Did you know that Norristown also has its very own community garden? It's called Norristown Sprouts. So if you're an avid gardener or you're brand-new to gardening, please, you know, again, reach out to me. I can connect you with the right people and make sure that you get a plot. It is free of charge for any Norristown resident. So if you want to get your hands a little dirty while also eating fresh fruits and fresh vegetables that you grew yourself, please reach out. Progress the slide. Many lifestyle habits begin at a very, very early age. Try to encourage the children in your life and in your family to make heart-healthy choices. Everything that we had mentioned, or I had mentioned over the last several slides, is it's a journey for a lot of people, and it's not meant to be done on your own. Create a team. Lean on your family for support as well as motivation. But the best thing that you can do is work together. You'll be physically active together, cooking meals together, and educating the children around you on the benefits of being heart-healthy. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was exposed, when I was a kid, my dad had to have a pretty invasive heart surgery. So we know that, especially with African-Americans, that heart disease runs in our families. So I think the points that you mentioned up here are gentle reminders in terms of how we can take baby steps to focus on heart health. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, I care deeply about this issue as well, and there are significant disparities. For South Asians, we have quadrupled the risk of heart disease 10 years earlier. My mom lost two of her brothers when they were 50 and 36. And so this is something that we really need to think about, like, how are, what are your genetic factors? You know, how are you predisposed, and what extra effort you might have to make in that case? And thank you for raising this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, public comment. I'm going to invite our District Attorney up because he needs to go back to doing his good work first for public comment.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone. As you mentioned, there's an important initiative on the agenda this morning under the Contracts Award. I believe it's number nine. I'd like to give you just a little bit of background and ask for all of your support with this. Involves data and our needs to push this Record Management System project, or RMS System project, ahead. Little background on this, Montgomery County has 51 police departments that we're dealing with, including the Pennsylvania State Police. They cover sections of the western Montgomery County, as well as our highways. Each of those law enforcement agencies within our communities have their own computer systems to maintain investigative and criminal files, arrests, charging information, and similar needs. Among those departments, there's a number of systems that are all by different vendors, which has been one of the big challenges. So not being on the same system has been difficult. Additionally, the county system, including Montgomery County Courts, as well as our office, are not on the same RMS system. And so, you know, what that means is these systems aren't talking to each other and don't interface or don't interface well. So you contrast that to a place like Philadelphia, where you have one police department and one court system, and they're working together. Because of the challenges that we have, this record management system in our law enforcement community in Montgomery County, we aren't able to access accurate current crime data regarding arrests, trends, charges, and things of the like. So, you know, for example, if you asked me, how many kinds of cases do we, or how many arrests for a certain charge, or domestic violence, or something along those lines, I can't give you an accurate number on that. And that shouldn't be, because the public expects that in 2024, we should be able to do that. So this is moving us towards transparency. And I think that's something that we all seek in trying to make better decisions. And look, as my role as District Attorney, you know, our goal is to seek justice for all. And that is this important concept that, you know, I hope that this will help us move forward on and do it in a transparent way. So, you know, sharing information, sharing information with the public is our goal. Additionally, expanded records management data will increase the ability to analyze the information, to help us on crime trends, geographic areas that are having issues that we can respond to, crime data collection, analysis, you know, being strategic in fighting crime. So this project, as mentioned, has been moving ahead. Today, this allocation of 1.8 million will help us to increase from 33 departments to the, hopefully, you know, moving us towards the other 18. You know, there are some challenges with that, but, you know, that enables us to provide discovery to the defense, to move things through the system in a faster way. So with this, I hope and I'm confident that, you know, if you move this forward today, you know, we're going to, we're going to take another big step, you know, towards getting where we need to be. We're not there yet. There's going to be a lot of challenges to this. Mr. DeBella, with your technology background, you know, I hope, you know, you can help us along with this. I think there's a Steering Committee meeting tomorrow at the Public Safety Training Campus. I don't know if it's my meeting to invite anybody to, but, you know, if you want to come, that'd be great. And look at discussing and working through this, to do this. So, you know, if, in some, you know, by actively moving this forward, you know, and trying to get this project across the goal line, you know, we can compile data from everything, from bail to demographic, criminal justice data. Our office can better strategic plan for the appropriate distribution, and I know that comes into your role in budgeting, you know, how we do this, how can we prevent crime in addition to providing criminal justice data to the county? in addition to providing criminal justice data to the county and data tracking. So I would encourage you to move this forward. I appreciate your comments so far. By saying we have the best DA's office in the country, I thought that was a great place to end your comments earlier. I agree, and we're just very blessed in this community with our relationships and working together, and this is, this is one more way to move us in that direction, because, you know, crime knows no borders, like, and we all have to keep, you know, working in this together. So thank you for your time this morning.
I think you went over his three minutes, but I'm gonna ask a question.
He did, he did go over his three minutes, but I just want to make a comment, and then we'll jump into questions. So one of the first things that I asked you was for certain data points.
Yep.
And you said, "I wish I could give you those data points, but I can't," right? And so this is just an example, while we haven't voted yet, of what you are asking us to vote on, is a demonstration of the county's commitment to reaching into, you know, local communities to really help solve for, you know, how do we, you know, ensure that we have a system that has the data so that we can make the right decisions. And so, thank you for bringing a little light to why this is so important, but this is just an example of the types of investments that the county doesn't have to make, but is willing to make to ensure that, you know, all of our stakeholders that play a role in criminal justice have the tools that they need to be successful. So thank you for being here.
And look, it's good for everybody. I was in a conversation last night with a number of people about this, like, we all want the data, like, to make the right decisions.
So, and this is great, and like I said, coming out of a technology background, you know, RMS systems, I mean, they're very extremely valuable, and you're replacing a system that, what, 30 years old?
Yeah, and it's been, it's been a slow process, you know, to try to get along those lines, but, you know, the county invested in this by getting a lot of the departments involved in it, and, you know, and, but some of the big ones are not, and we gotta figure out a way to do that.
Just a quick question, the, with any type of system, there's always ongoing, what they call maintenance costs, and it's my understanding that those costs are once the departments are part of the system, they then now pick up the cost moving forward.
My understanding of this is we're encouraging participation by this, by, you know, by funding it originally for them, and trying to get them over onto these systems, because, you know, they, each of the police departments is paying for their own system. It has been, you know, for a long period of time, and that's the challenge, you know, talk to each other, these are all businesses that are getting supported by bringing in those contracts. So, you know, to do this, I would defer to you or people that understand it better than I, I just know that it's been probably the biggest challenge for us in our office, and I've been here since 1995. You know, I mentioned before, we're still doing stats by hand. That's not where our time should be spent, and the accuracy is gonna go up if we're doing it on a system.
Right, just the data sharing alone over time is gonna be priceless. That's what it really comes down to, and the future with the help of fighting crime, I mean, it's just, there's so many, there's so many pros to having this and having this in place and moving in this direction that you're going, it's, I can't even see a downside, so I would absolutely continue to support this and future endeavors related to this as well.
Good, so you're voting on it now, or are you gonna wait?
Well, I think we're getting close.
Because I think I got everybody right now.
We're getting close.
All right, so one, well, one, I just want to thank you for, you know, coordinating with all of the departments, I know that isn't easy, and it's great to see that, you know, as you mentioned, many of the largest departments are now gonna be included this year, so.
We hope, we hope. You know, it's still working through that, though, and encouraging, you know, this to happen, because, you know, the municipalities have invested a lot of money in these systems, like, over time, and they work for them. So, you know, we're asking them to come to a new system.
Absolutely, and I know that they're gonna have to incur some annual upkeep, but as the county, we're able to commit and invest that, you know, that large upfront cost that they would otherwise have to incur and may not be able to do that.
I think we should make a motion, vote on it now. Throw it all, throw a curveball at it.
You cannot do that.
I cannot do that. The solicitor says we can, I'm not doing it, but you, you can, I know you have a busy day ahead of you, but we will call you and let you know how the vote goes.
Thank you, and if there's anything else that comes up, and anything you need, I'm happy to, happy to.
Sounds good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, who do we have up next for public comment?
Up next is Jim Partland.
That's gonna be a very difficult act to follow.
Well, you can try, you can certainly try.
All right, this is my first time here, so go easy on me, please. I'm Jim McPartland. I've lived in the borough of Amherst for 43 years, where I served on the Wissahickon Library Board, also served on the Taxpayers Association in Amherst, and I was also a member for probably 10 years on the library board, so I'm fully prepared to feel comfortable in a body like this, bringing some of my concerns, and I was told there's a clock somewhere.
There is, it's right there.
That's, okay. My primary concern is, it's been brought to my attention that over the last four-year period from 2021 through 2024, we're looking at a 34% increases in taxes. Is that accurate?
I don't know the exact numbers, but we can get you the numbers.
Okay, and I realize also that the inflation over that four-year period has been somewhat erratic, considering the pandemic fell into those years, and I'm only asking for something very simpler. I'm also very familiar with budgets, having started my own before and after-school program in Bucks County, so I've had my foot in Bucks County and Montgomery County for the last four decades. So what I would like to ask, and just make it available to me, is a line item for the expenditures, so I can take a close look at the budgets. I'm fully aware that if there's a need for the expenditure, then we have to step up and take care of that. The other thing that concerns me greatly is I don't live very far from Norristown, and occasionally I have to come to Norristown for one reason or another, and I look at the complex across the street from where I am, and then I looked at the numbers for the construction, and it's somewhat, for a layperson like myself, it's somewhat of a staggering amount, so I'm gonna have to do my homework to find out why the county had to spend those kinds of taxpayers' dollars to afford. Do you call it a justice center? Is that the nomenclature? Then there's one other that concerns me when looking at some of the records, it's called the Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, and I'd like to get some documentation as to what the Planning Commission actually does, and justification for that line item for their expenditures.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
You did well for your first, first time here.
That was just, that was just good luck. Oh, thank you very much for allowing me to speak out.
Thanks, Jim, for being here.
Thank you.
They're all good points that you raised, and I know as this board, we're, you know, we're all relatively new into this role, so, and I'm not gonna blame past boards, but we're all committed to looking at, in fact, we hope to have a presentation in the near future at one of our meetings specifically about the Justice Center, the project, the overview of the project and the spending, and you're pretty, you're pretty close, you're pretty accurate on the tax increases over the last four years, it's a cumulative of close to 34%, so you're not wrong, and one of the things I'm very committed to, I have a background in finance and budgeting, you know, large budgets, and I'll be looking very closely as we roll into the 2024 budget cycle, so, but, and I agree that you did a great job for your first time.
So thank you. Can I communicate with you?
Sure can.
About some of the documents that?
Yep, anytime.
That I'd like to take a look at.
Yep, we're, I can communicate with any one of us, or each, all of us, but all our contact information is on the website, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, thank you again.
But we do have county staff, and that stuff is readily available, so we are going to do an update on the Justice Center, so you should keep coming to our meetings, because we want to be transparent about how that project is going, so we'll make sure you get the information that I need.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Up next is David Morgan. Morning, David Morgan from Amherst. And I'd like to address some of the proactive ways we can help the public in our county. The Heart Talk was good with a family, working together, being aware of healthy activities, and there's, in the future, with this rec center, possibly ways that, with clubs there that men can help with their families, coaching them, and women's sports, too. I know that Manko Mamas, as I mentioned many times, has a low funding, about 20,000, was in the report I had from July, but we'd like to see that really encouraged. Manko Mamas, helping black birth outcomes be better, and also the homeless situation, I mentioned last meeting, the aspect of Philadelphia has a Center City District, groups that have, they have a broom, and they have ways of collecting the trash and recycling in downtown Philadelphia, so I think that could be considered for some homeless to have purposes. I've heard about a veterans program, too, which is a compensated, healthy outlook from having jobs, helping the community be cleaner, and could be in the parks, too. I also noticed that, last meeting, Mr. DeBello, you mentioned more time, and maybe five minutes at the end doesn't appear at this meeting, but hopefully that could be in the future. I noticed also that the tax mention of 34% compares with Bucks County, I mentioned last meeting during salary board, about this 6.2% tax increase, they had one time, it looks like, for this whole decade. So if we were trying to reach that goal of looking at now, day one, month one, of keeping a lid on costs, knowing what our expenditures are, we can help our taxpayer bear a burden, because North Penn, the taxpayers felt that it's an expensive project, didn't want to spend that much money for their taxes. So let's consider that for every household to be helped. It's easy to spend money. The credit cards today, it's easy to go to the mall, wherever, but it's difficult to conserve our funds, so if we can really look into that, ways I've mentioned in the past, like scheduling trials so that they're efficiently done, and using space with smart timing, is great. We know the federal level, I have a poster here saying the federal budget that was 32 trillion, but now it's 34, and who knows when it'll be 35, and it's unsustainable. So we really have to think of how to be responsible as best we can with our finances. Also, the Planning Commission has a report, which says, the 2020 report, saying that retention of businesses on page three is really important goals. So if we have a tax-friendly environment, businesses will want to develop here, keep that in mind, please. So then, another thing is also working from home. We have ways of saving that way, and I know many hybrid workers, they work some days at home, they come to the office. A lot of the businesses are thinking 20 to 40% less off of expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, time is up.
Thank you.
You gotta get like Jim, Mr. Morgan, so thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome.
Up next is Marilyn Muir. Hi, I'm Marilyn Muir from Lower Salford Township, and I'm addressing the marking of ballots when incorrectly dated. While errors can occasionally be unintended, the county board of elections must follow the law and the rule during federal elections from the Department of State. The Department of State has issued clear instruction stating ballots must be signed and dated in order to be counted. In quotation marks, "Fill out, sign, and date the declaration," end quote. That's 25 PS 3146.6A and 3150.16A. In a federal election, the Department of State holds the jurisdictional advice, 2023 is a federal election. Our county also applied a nonsense rule to counting in 2023, when many of you were not on the board, where the ruling only applied to Erie, Allegheny, and Philadelphia, not Montgomery County. The board chose to do that to set an unlawful precedent. Now you're faced with making two mistakes, the one from 2023, and now again in this cycle. County officials do not have the role of judge and jury on this. The law is clear. Please read Act 12 and review the statements issued from the Department of State. Imagine, if you will, these other circumstances whereby any official simply permits a document to be filed just because the official thinks they know the intent, a dated check to be cashed, notarized document, legal filings, birth certificates, or death certificates. It is not the role of a county official to judge the intent of the voter. The law is cut and dry, date and sign with accuracy. Also, while the discussion of dating is interesting, and we already have clear guidance on this from the state, you should all be focused on what is already in motion. The governor has already proposed new guidance. In addition, on, at PA.gov, Press Room, November 29, 2023, there's an article, Shapiro Administration introduces redesigned mail ballot materials to give voters clearer instructions, decrease number of rejected ballots, and ensure every legal vote is counted. Also, the fact remains that many are still confused, and mail-in ballots are subject to multiple opportunities for error. An easy, unfathomable, and accurate solution is readily available to all citizens, vote in person, period. So let's be clear, the conversation and adjudication of incorrectly dated ballots should further your resolve to apply the law as written, the count of the ballots based on this new guidance, which will be used in this election.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Up next on Zoom, we have Barbara Farman.
Hello?
Can you go ahead and carry it?
Can you hear me?
Can you talk a little louder?
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Barbara Farman, New Hanover Township. I truly do appreciate that this Board of Commissioners is interested in listening to the people and the voters and the taxpayers. I do not believe that the board should have passed a motion to count undated ballots because they already have the guidance from the Third Circuit. A federal appeals court has put a pause on a lower court ruling that calls for the counting of mailed ballots that arrive on time but in envelopes without dates handwritten by Pennsylvania voters. This Third U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals on Wednesday, this was Wednesday in November, temporarily blocked the lower court ruling while it undergoes a review by a panel of judges. The ruling by U.S. District Judge Susan Baxter was expected to be appealed before it ultimately reaches this U.S. Supreme Court, whose final word on what are often referred to as undated ballots may help determine the outcome of the 2024 presidential race and other key upcoming elections in the swing state. Sorry, I just do not believe that the decision was correct, or the motion was correct. When an appellate court pauses the ruling of a lower court, you have all the guidance you need, you do not count undated or misdated ballots. So we should not be making laws or, you know, being legislators. You must sit and wait the appellate court's ruling, period. And so what you decided the other day should not be allowed. NPR even said Pennsylvania undated ballots, ruling paused by the Third Circuit. So... Circuit. So we should be waiting on that ruling. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Great.
Just, this undated ballot or misdated ballot, it's a very complicated issue that's being discussed in multiple courts. And I personally hope that we get a decision related to this, because I was really, myself was really torn as far as supporting the motion or not supporting the motion, because I was, you know, looking at it strictly from a law perspective. But we have a big, we have a huge election this year, and hopefully it's decided in the court to determine the appropriate actions forward, or the legislative bodies more clear on Act 77 where it's defined, so that we're not put into these situations where we're left up to making interpretations on laws or that we don't create and we have to follow.
We can cover this in Election Board in more detail, but just in regard to the public comment, that issue is different. We didn't, our decision only had to do with misstated ballots as to the year, which was not the same issue in the case that was being referred to. And our rationale is also under the Pennsylvania Constitution, that case concerns the materiality clause of the Voting Rights Act. So there's a lot of detail involved, but it's going to be a complicated year, I'm sure, and we'll work through these issues. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone that gave a public comment. So next up, I'd like to make, approve the minutes from our last meeting, January 11. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 11, 2024 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, approval of county bridge posting. I'd like to invite Jesse King, who's been waiting in the lobby.
Morning. Meeting's got a little crowded. We lost our seats.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jesse King. I am the Director of Assets and Infrastructure for the county. Before you today is an ordinance, Montgomery County Ordinance establishing weight restrictions for vehicles traveling across county-owned bridges. Section 4902 of the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code gives the county the authority to make those restrictions, enact signage, and enforce penalties regarding the ordinance. The list of bridges is provided by Pendott. After they have conducted their annual inspections of all county bridges, they make their recommendations as to those that should be restricted, provide it to the county, and then we take the appropriate action to enact signage and notify local municipalities of those restrictions. The ordinance further gives authority to enact, it provides the county with the authority to actually put up the signage and to enact penalties which are enforced through the local municipalities. Of note, I, we have seven bridges on the list today. I did want to check, just to be safe, on the 2022 ordinance, we had 13 bridges that were restricted, we're down to seven. Those seven are the same that were restricted in 2020, and they have the same weight restriction. So there's nothing on this ordinance that would be a surprise to anyone. In fact, I checked yesterday, the signage has already been there. Had something been new, our teams would be ready within the next 72 hours to change the signage to appropriate. The Department of Assets and Infrastructure has reviewed the ordinance, as well as our contracted engineering company, and we present it for a vote and signature. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as described by Mr. Jesse King. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comment?
Just process question. If these were, if these seven were part of 13 that was previously approved, then why does that come in front of us again? I guess I'm confused.
I actually do not know the answer to that, whether...
There is a change in the list, so we're approving an entire list. Back in 2022, it was a much broader list. So what we're saying is, if we didn't vote, that old list would include bridges that no longer have a weight requirement. So we're approving a list and a posting.
So that, but the ones, the other six, basically, they...
Are no longer, are no longer other restrictions.
Right, they've been completed.
So did that require an action to remove those restrictions?
That's what this essentially does, because we're now approving what the list is of bridges with weight restrictions.
Right, so with the approval of this, it basically automatically removes the other six.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood the...
Sure.
Okay.
Let's go to move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion carries. All right, next up, thank you, Jesse. Next up, authorization to advertise amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. And I'd like to invite Kaylee Silver up to review this resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I have two orders of business today to request. The first, as mentioned, sorry for the mouthful, is the authorization to advertise an amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, which is required by our Federal Office of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, office, under our Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus funding distributed in 2020. Next slide, please. So in accordance with these federal HUD requirements, under the CDBG Program Regulations, the county is permitted to make a substantial amendment to its annual action plan and budget in accordance with our Citizen Participation Plan that we submit to HUD. Montgomery County has determined that it is necessary to amend the approved CDBG Program Budget for the previously approved Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan. This is considered a substantial amendment because our Citizen Participation Plan calls for public comment for a 30-day period whenever we add or cancel or change funding to an activity. We certainly don't want to leave any money on the table, so we're asking for a quick change. That change comprises of $75,000, which was, in the original plan, allocated to Mitzvah Circle for increased diaper distribution. I want to be clear that that diaper distribution during the coronavirus pandemic did still happen, and we're so grateful for that support. Mitzvah Circle has just been unable to have the data requirements and is unable to utilize this grant, and instead is utilizing other supports, and we continue to partner with them. So we are asking for a resolution to advertise for 30 days, the idea to move this $75,000 to then support our Valley Youth House Youth Street Outreach Program that supports youth experiencing homelessness aged is 18 to 24 throughout Montgomery County. They have an immediate need just for continued support for the program to meet the needs of youth experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. So today's resolution from you will help us to then put this up for a 30-day public comment period to obtain the views of presidents, public agencies, and other interested parties. So this amendment that I just described will be available for public examination on the Montgomery County website. My office will also have a paper copy. We will also, per our Citizen Participation Plan, hold a public hearing, and that will be on February 12, 2024, here in One Montgomery Plaza. But comments can be submitted throughout the entire 30-day comment period to myself via email, via mail, by telephone, or any means necessary. The instructions will all be on the website. So thank you for your consideration.
Great.
And that's the only change, right?
Correct.
All right, I'd like to get a motion on the table, motion to approve Resolution Number One as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, authorization to apply for the TD Bank Charitable Foundation Housing for Everyone Funding Competition.
Thank you. Just very quickly asking...
Very quickly, yeah.
Sorry. Promise. This is just a required authorization for us to be able to submit a grant application to TD Bank for their charitable foundations housing for everyone. Just a quick summary of what we plan to submit on the next slide. So we are asking for your authorization and resolution to submit a grant for the top tier, which will be $250,000 to support my office's Your Way Homes programs and the Public Private Partnership and homelessness. This project, this proposed project and grant application will benefit up to 50 low, moderate-income households who are either experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness. Next slide, please. And then what it will help support directly, if we receive the grant funding, will be rental assistance programs, utility arrears, security deposits, rental assistance to help rehouse people out of homelessness, and also landlord engagement and helping to develop our relationships with local landlords, developers, and property managers to support them as well, and local landlords and businesses in the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two as described by Ms. Kaylee Silver. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, authorization of community planning assistance, contract renewals for Upper Moreland Township, Central Perkiomen, Regional Planning Commission, Swansville, Jenkett Town, and Narberth Burrows. Mr. Scott France.
You got it. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, this is the final batch of renewals for our Community Planning Assistance Contract Program. And so we have, as usual, this will bring the series of contracts that expire December 31 into another three years that will go through December 31 of 2026. And there is the 50% cost sharing part of this program in place since the 70s. We have today Upper Moreland Township, where we'll be doing zoning update and adoption, audit of SADO ordinance and general services for a total cost over three years of $95,508. The municipal share of that is $47,754. Swansville Borough involves updating their revitalization plan and supporting borough-wide connectivity projects. That one is a total of three years for $54,576 with a municipal share of $27,288. Jenkett Town Borough involves preparing an audit of recent comprehensive plan implementation activities and developing selective updates to their zoning and subdivision ordinances. Total cost of that contract is $75,042 with municipal share of $37,521. Narberth Borough, we will be drafting an active transportation plan in cooperation with Lower Mary Township and assisting with the implementation of complete street projects and preparing needed zoning and SADO revisions. That contract is for $68,220 with a municipal share of $34,110. And the fifth element is actually one of our regional planning contracts, which involves six municipalities. This is the Central Perkiomen Valley Regional Planning Commission. That work includes completing an update to their comprehensive plan and ongoing Greenway and stewardship implementation. Total cost of that contract is $88,686 with a municipal share of $44,343. And that's the resolution before you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Three as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries. Next up, authorization of a property transfer of county bridge number 44, Morden Road over Pennypack Creek in Abington Township.
Thank you. And Matt Ebbin couldn't be here today. He's covering us for the DRC Board, so I'll take this item. This is an example of where we, the Planning Commission and the Montgomery County Transportation Authority, the MCTA, assist our Roads and Bridges Departments to acquire right-of-way for county-owned bridge projects. This bridge is County Bridge 44 on Morden Road, and it intersects or goes through the county's own Pennypack Creek. So this is a unique situation where the landowners are the county in both situations. So the mechanism here is a transfer through deed at the cost of $1 to the MCTA that will then in turn, at a future date, revert that back to the county. And the purpose of this, the accomplishment, is that it keeps the right-of-way associated with this bridge as it goes through its rebuilding project. And in the future, they will all be tied together, and should anything happen with the park, with the bridge, the road, in terms of ownership, everything will be consistent and together, and will stay together were anything to change. But there are no plans to do so. So this resolution would authorize the sale of that transaction and allow the project to continue.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Four as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next up, Catherine Halen, our personnel, approval of our personnel list.
Good morning, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated January 24, 2024, with a timestamp of 8:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 25, 2024 Personnel Presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on Attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeja. Any board comments? Let's move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, awards of contract. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on Attached Exhibit B. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any closing commissioner comments?
I just have one quick one. Last meeting, I mentioned about having a presentation related to the Justice Center, and I know we're moving in that direction, and I really appreciate that. One of the other presentations I'd like to see, hopefully, in the near future, is I met with some representatives from Law, House, and Mission Kids, and we talked about a very, what I say, disturbing, I don't know if you want to call it trend or whatever it may be, but we were talking about child trafficking. And, I mean, I was aware of the, a lot of the inner workings of what's going on. It's really appalling when you, when you actually get details and find out what happens, not only within Montgomery County or Pennsylvania, but throughout the country, and some even globally. But I think it would be actually a good opportunity for us to invite them in to do a presentation in the near future as well, to kind of raise awareness to child trafficking. They're working hard, and they're fighting, but it's a very complex issue, especially when it comes to prosecution and all that. And I was really, it's just really interesting that the information that they're providing, and I think that it would be, be good for us to present that as well from a community standpoint, so people really understand what's actually occurring out there. So it's just a suggestion, but I think it'd be a good topic in the future.
Yeah, that's fair. Two great organizations doing great, great work in our community. Any comments on your own? Okay, hearing none. Some upcoming meeting dates, Retirement Board meeting immediately following Salary Board today.
It's at noon now.
Is that noon? Okay, nobody told me that. So, thank you. Board of Commissioners meeting will be Wednesday, not Thursday, February 7. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the January 25, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Salary Board meeting adjourned. Thank you for being here. All right, is there any public comment for Salary Board? No? All right. So I'd like to invite Ms. Catherine Halen up.
Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated January 24 to 2024 with a timestamp of 8:30 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 25, 2024 Salary Board Presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Controller Sanchez. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
We're shifting the way we do this. All right, great, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the January 25, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Oh, did I not acknowledge that the motion passed? Motion, okay.
You're good.
I'm good. Thank you, that's up. That's enough. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I always do.
You do.
It's good practice. You do, you know?